Yeah, we're good.
Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth. The time is 5:30 and I call this work session to order. We can start off with city updates from Ms. Lono.
Thank you, Madam President, City Council and Mayor Gradisar. I just have a few city updates this evening. And to start with a COVID update, the number of positive case counts for the week was fifty-four point two, which was, I'm sorry, seventy-six point two, which was down from last week. The one-week positivity rate of five point four, which is the same as last week. And then Pueblo County has the same ten days stabilized hospitalizations from COVID. And just a reminder that next Monday, the Public County Health Director Randy Evitz will be here to give an update and answer any questions on, on other than COVID and some like the flu and RSV and any other questions that you have. And he is going to take the city update time next Monday evening because it is televised. And from there, I would like to, and the office staff would, and Counselor Martinez asked if, if you could help me facilitate the finalization this evening of the City Council Work Retreat. I think Alyssa sent out a doodle poll and received one, two, three, four responses already. So there are a couple of you that haven't. The, the primary date so far is a Saturday, February eighteenth and or later. And Counselor Winter suggested two nights during the week. That would be a Tuesday and Wednesday night to begin from 5:30 and end an hour or two later. So if everybody else, if we could get, if you could facilitate and get to a good date, we could start to let staff know, department directors, and then also begin to work on what agenda items you would like to include on that work session.
Just to let you know, Ms. Lono, I'm gone from the seventeenth to the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth.
How does the eighteenth work for everybody else? I know you responded. I'm not sure if you did, Mr. Tensio. Sarah responded to the eighteenth. I think I said yes. Dennis or Mr. Forrest? Counselor Winner?
Is there, is there, is anybody open for discussion to split that up?
I don't think so.
Because it's just, it's just, it's a long time to sit.
Yeah, I think Counselor Martinez wanted to do it all in one day. So if everybody else is okay with that.
Everybody else wants to do it all in one?
The eighteenth works for everybody else.
Thank you. Well, notify department directors and then we'll start to work on gathering through email your agenda recommendations and suggestions.
And Convention Center again, I think.
It was, it was open.
That's what they asked.
Alyssa said when she checked that the Convention Center was open on Saturday, the eighteenth, in the same room that it was held last year.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to share that the State of the City written report is on your space this evening. It is also available to the community on the city's website at pueblo.us. And the mayor will speak on the highlights of the State of the City Report next Monday at the City Council meeting because it is televised and it will either be part of the mayor's commentary or a work session item for a few minutes. So one of, one of those two, but it is available now. We'll be in compliance. The mayor will be with the charter. It does require that the city, State of the City annually be presented for the formal record of the city by the first, I think, the first day of February to the city clerk. And so that will be in advance and it is available now, but we will present it formally to the city clerk's office in writing. So it is on the formal record before the first of February. The next update is just simply ARPA and there are updates tonight. The work session with respect to the 2022, a full year at a glance, and then the balances moving forward into 2023 and then stopping to comment on two or three of the projects. You have in front of you the slide deck of the PowerPoint for the update this evening. And then you also have two spreadsheets of the full detail of the report out of ARPA. We were thinking that you have an opportunity, we'll send those electronically as well. If there are ARPA projects that you would like more information on or we need to add to the work retreat agenda, just let us know so that there would be more information and more in depth than you receive tonight. But Alex is here from the Finance Director's position to go through the numbers of where we are in 2022 and what's left over for ARPA into 2023. So that's the last of the ARPA updates for tonight, and that does conclude city updates for the evening. Do you have any questions or directions?
Any questions for Ms. Lono? Counselor Forrest?
You know, I got a call today from someone that was concerned about. He evidently owns a building on, in the Union Avenue District and it's a historical building. But the gist of our conversation was that they did not feel that there was uniformity as to how the rules about historical buildings, they were wanting to do some remodeling or they wanted to paint the outside. And I'm wondering whether or not we couldn't get somebody from the Historical Society. I don't know who has the, the power, I guess, to tell people what they can and cannot do for a building that has historical designation to the state of Colorado.
Well, there's a Historical Preservation Committee that deals with the Union Avenue structure specifically and have to approve any and all murals. And one of the things that will be becoming before council at your next meeting is an appeal from the Historical Preservation Committee that turned down a request or held that an individual is in violation. I don't know what building you're talking about, but we have to be careful, I think, because you guys are going to be the decision makers in that process. And Mr. Kogosik can fill you in a little more on that, but.
My, my comment had, not specifically on murals, but just everything. I mean, they control what kind of windows you can have, what kind of, whether or not you could even remove the stairs. I mean, there's just a lot of rules. And this gentleman was telling me, he just wanted uniformity, that, that everybody that has a building would be treated fairly, no matter, you know, what building it is. And he had examples where they would, they would take one building and say it's okay here and it's not okay on another building for the same, the same kind of thing. And I, and I'm not, I'm not giving this person any credibility until I find out for myself. But it would be good to have them come during the work session and maybe explain the process. What, what is their guidelines? Where's the rules to the, how you play that game, I guess? And, and I just like to see somebody from the Historical Preservation Committee, whatever they're called, as to how they go about their business and what they can and cannot do. And I know the state has a lot of rules and regulations dealing with designation of historical buildings.
This is by ordinance, I think, right? It's, yeah.
And that that's included in one of our codes.
Yeah, we have an Historic Preservation Code that lays out the rules. People within that district have to apply for a certificate of appropriateness for certain buildings. The, the historic buildings are treated somewhat differently than those that were built later and, and approved prior to the historic district. So we, the mayor's right. I, I think we should really have a work session and have staff explain to you what the rules are and what the process is. But I think that should occur after our meeting on January twenty-third. On the twenty-third, you're going to hear an appeal from a property owner who was denied a certificate of appropriateness for the painting of, of a building. So you've got to keep an open mind and just decide. It, it's another quasi judicial proceeding. You've got to keep an open mind, decide on the evidence. You cannot overturn the decision of the Historic Preservation Committee, but you can send it back to them with guidance if you think that they proceeded incorrectly.
Okay, thank you.
Tensio?
Yeah, I got the same phone call. I didn't get it from the person that has the appeal, but from a person that, other than himself, is saying the same thing, that everyone should be treated the same and they believe that that's not happening. So.
Well, that's the intent.
I'd like to hear.
The, the party to the appeal is a gentleman named Henry Barunda, Hank Barunda. And so you should really avoid discussing the case with him and/or staff before the hearing.
I, I don't know the gentleman, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Winner?
Yeah, I can just add that things with the HPC have been kind of difficult at times as far as communication. I remember a case quite a few years ago that they were trying to say that the sign was the wrong font, that it needed to look more historical. So they said, well, do you have an example of fonts? And of course, they didn't have an example of fonts. And then it came down to, well, we're not responsible for windows. We're just responsible if the structure is being changed. So I think there's a lot of miscommunication at times just within the HPC itself. So I can understand where this is coming from.
Anybody else, any other? Any other questions for Ms. Lono? Okay, then we will start off with the EPA Superfund Site Update. If you can have Beth Archer, EPA Community Involvement Coordinator, to the podium.
Thank you, everyone. I am going to share my screen and begin our presentation in just one moment.
And just to let folks know, Sabrina here, I'll be presenting most of the slides. Janine Naderman with the state will join us around institutional controls later in the slide presentation.
It looks like I'm not sharing my screen anymore, I don't think. What are? I'm seeing the City Council Chambers screen. Let me, sorry, everyone, let me try again. All right, are you able to view my screen?
Yes, we can see it now.
Perfect, thank you. Sabrina, over to you.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to our second slide, our agenda. And we've got a couple new faces on the team. I'd like them to, to just join real quick and give folks a wave if they can. Amanda Bartley, a new remedial project manager who moved from Montana, and Sydney Chan, who moved from Atlanta, Region Four. So we're excited to have them on the team. Like I said, Janine's going to be helping on the institutional controls topic. So I wanted to, I wanted to talk a little bit about our residential area and updates around that. And the former smelter area, what we call operable unit two as well, and our, what we've done in 2023 plans and, and forward. A little bit around enforcement activities. Next slide, please. So for the residential area updates, folks may remember we've got about nineteen hundred properties in that study area. We've done a lot because we're getting close to the end, as we'll show you here in a moment. We've done a lot of community involvement around door-to-door and last call to try to get as many folks signed up and giving us consent for sampling and cleanup as, as possible. We've also been collaborating with our state partners, other programs within EPA in the state of Colorado, as well as the local health department on a lead collaboration pilot project to help inform, continue to educate residents about other sources of lead in the community like lead-based paint, since we have a huge percentage of the homes in our study area being built before nineteen seventy-eight, the lead paint ban. We were able to go back to hybrid meetings in August, so we're, we've been excited to be back down in the community. And because of COVID and some equipment recalls, the Pueblo Health Department wasn't, wasn't able to do blood lead testing for a while, but they've been able to do that now again. And so they're reinvigorating their lead health program. Next slide, please. Continuing with the residential area update, similar to September twenty twenty-one, we did a slight expansion about half the sizes in twenty twenty-one. And similarly, in your slide, you can see the green outline to the northwest and to the southwest. Those were areas that we added where we had cleanups right adjacent to that. And we'd like to see a clean margin around the area. And, and we want to be able to limit, you know, how much we're, we're moving out and what seems reasonable for what would have come out of the stack from Colorado Smelter that was formerly down on the Benedict Park property. And so this is just part of our normal due diligence that we're doing. I'll talk a little bit more about upcoming work that's going to help us really rifle in on this boundary so that we can finalize that. Next slide, please. And that gets us to our twenty twenty-three plans around air dispersion and modeling. I have tasked a contractor to help us identify the hopeful maximum distance that smelters would have been released from the two-hundred-foot main stack and affected the neighborhoods around the Florida, the former Colorado smelter. So that's something that we're hoping to kick off here pretty quickly. And we're also doing an updated background study, which is, in this map, the red dots that are outside the pink buffer, and that pink buffer was placed so that we wouldn't be sampling areas that may have other metals contamination from other industrial sources. But we want to look at what is sort of a normal urban lead level for Pueblo, and that'll help us to update our background study. The first background study we did was in twenty eighteen. Next slide, please. We've been continuing to march forward with the sampling and cleanups. This slide shows where we were in twenty twenty-one, late twenty twenty-one and now, and late twenty twenty-two. So we're about ninety-nine percent done with our soil sampling and about seventy-six percent done with the dust sampling. That lag there is primarily because of the time during COVID when we couldn't go into homes. On the residential cleanup side, we are about eighty-eight percent with our, done with our soil cleanups and about sixty-one percent done with the dust cleanups. A big effort has been residential last call. We've been talking about it for a little while, but because we're so close on getting done, and, and the idea is that we want to be done with cleanups by the end of twenty twenty-three for soil. Our dust cleanups could go into early twenty twenty-four. We're really trying to touch as many people as we can in the community with our message around the importance of getting their properties sampled, and if they need to get cleaned up, try to get that done. So we are going to continue more social media, email updates, get boots on the ground and do more door-to-door work. City cable channel advertising, and then some things that are in the planning are more media interviews and some op-eds, TV spot, formal letters, perhaps a, a follow-up telephone town hall that was really successful the last time that we did that with the mayor. And that was really helpful. And then our, our normal press releases, social media, email and website updates. Next, please. So for operable unit two, for folks that may not be aware, we often call the former smelter area, this green area that's in the middle, that is bisected by I-25 and the active Union Pacific Railway line through there. But we've also included the undeveloped areas around Runyon Lake and several of the residential areas have some undeveloped areas around them too. So those have been wrapped into the undeveloped portion of operable unit two. And so we've got a lot of work planned. We've done a lot of surface soil sampling, but we've got some more data collection around soil and sediments and a lot of biota, so mammals, fish and bugs and vegetation. So that's what's in the work for twenty twenty-three. That'll help us fill data gaps around how those organisms or if they're affected by the smelter contamination. And then another big piece around this is reuse planning. The former Colorado Smelter revitalization project now called Begin, that was really focused around the early days and operable unit one. But we're looking at operable unit two areas as well, and we're dusting off some twenty nineteen documents and trying to get back to that for operable unit to reuse planning. Next slide, please. Other pieces here, this map just nicely shows that the pale yellow are areas where we have completed some sampling. We do have more to do in those pale areas. We had earlier done some shallow soil sampling to about two feet below ground surface. Now we've got several areas throughout the community where we would like to do deeper boreholes and try to, to characterize deeper what might be smelter-related. And then when do we get to native soils, non-smelter-related areas as well? It's difficult to see, but on the south area of Runyon Lake, there's some black hashing. Right before the new year, we were able to complete some sampling on forty-six of those areas south of the lake, and we're going to continue working on that this year. Next slide, please. See here, I think the next one we've got is our, our timeline, and this is somewhat updated based on the fact that we were able to move our operable unit two activities up two years after getting the bill funding that helped us do that. And so we've got a lot of the sampling that I mentioned that we are planning to do, as well as the, the, the reports that come out of that. And that, those won't start to be developed until twenty twenty-five potentially. And we will finalize our remedial investigation report and a feasibility study. We'll be working closely with community members so that they know what we've been up to along the way. And they know what the possible alternatives are for cleanup, where cleanups are needed. And those will come out in a proposed plan. So hopefully, we can stick to this timeline, but you know, some time will tell if we're able to stick with that. Another important piece of what's been going on are just our standard working through liability issues. It's just part of the super fund process and working with the, the current property owners in that main central area of operable unit two, prospective purchasers or renters, and then also working with Black Hills Energy recently to get consent to one of their properties that's up in the blocks area. That's one of the undeveloped areas that we'd like to get characterized for the ecological risk assessment. And then we're also working closely with Union Pacific Railway so that they can complete sampling of their one-hundred-foot right-of-way as it goes through the site north to south on the west side of operable unit two. And then when we get that data, our folks will take a look at worker exposures, ecological risk, whether or not there's the potential for contaminant migration off of the site from that area as well. Another, a, a big, big part of what we've been working toward, Janine's going to talk with you about next, the institutional controls.
Yeah, exactly. So institutional controls, we've been working with the city for five or six years on a draft plan or a draft, you know, we'll call it draft plan. And we have achieved one. We've got concurrence with the mayor and the city's planning department on it. However, we won't be able to finalize it and present it to the public for a public process until we have the site boundary finalized. And a lot of what Sabrina just talked about has to feed into that, making sure that we have a, a good boundary of the, the area. So that's why we still talk about it as a study area instead of a super fund site. So basically, just as background, an institutional control or is, is administrative or legal control, it helps minimize potential for human exposure to contamination or, and/or protect the integrity of the remedy. In this case, what we will be talking about is an overlay of the entire study area, what's the study area right now. And that seems like a very large area to have an ordinance in place to, that this would affect. But in reality, we anticipate that it will apply to only five to ten properties per year maximum, and only if they are going to have a large construction project, which would be impacted. So that would mean construction, they would dig a very deep hole down to depth where perhaps there is some, still some lead or arsic contamination would be, have to be handled differently than just any old dirt. This does not circumvent the normal city priming process for construction projects. Rather, it's, works hand in hand together. So that's basically it. When we can get the boundary finalized, then we will move forward with the public process, the city's public process, working with you guys to get, to, to the public process and get everything finalized. Thanks, Sabrina.
Thank you. I think our last slide here is our contacts, our new contact information. Just to fill folks in a little bit more, Sydney Chan has a lot of lead experience that she brings from Region Four. And Amanda is going to be heading up the operable unit two pieces of things. So we've got their phone number here as well.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Forrest or Ms. Archer? Counselor Martinez, or Tega?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Sabrina, or I guess whomever wants to answer this. When you say you're ninety-nine percent done with soil testing, does that mean that you're ninety-nine percent done with all the soil testing for all residential homes? Is, is that how you categorize?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're getting close to. So there's, there's a couple of different ways that we look at it. And this is sort of the number based on what's inside the, the dashed area, including those, those little green outlines that we added to the study area last September. And I think the, the total number of properties, and it, it's always somewhat influx because some of these properties have more than one home on them. There might be a, a main home and then a rental, or there could be a couple different multifamily sorts of homes on that. But yes, that's, that's the hope. There's more room in our contracting if we do need to, to do additional sampling beyond what we think is that study area. That's why it's really important with the background study as well as this air dispersion modeling. I'm hoping that those two things will help us really refine that study area and, and get it to the point where we can call it, you know, this is the maximal distance where we think Colorado smelter dropout, dropout from that stack would have affected the neighborhood so that we don't continue to expand the site study area.
Great, thanks for answering that. And of those ninety-nine percent that have been tested, what's the number that actually need, still need the remediation of the soil and dust?
I have the, well, the overall number. So earlier on, when we were much closer to the smelter itself and hadn't cleaned so many properties, it was closer to fifty percent of the properties looked like they needed a soil cleanup, and we're at about forty-five, forty-six percent of properties needing soil cleanups at this point. So right now, you know, it's just, you know, a, a property or so a week seems to turn up as we're getting out to the margins, because we've done so much sampling already and, and have completed the vast majority of those cleanups. Part of our, our concern, though, is we've still got folks that are refusing. Maybe they gave us consent to do the sampling and might need a cleanup, but they're not allowing us to do the cleanup. And we, you know, we still are considering this a voluntary process. But we're really trying to use the health education and outreach approach to let them know why it's really important for them to give us consent and for us to, to make sure that, that we can get this work done. You know, anecdotally, we have information that says that folks might have trouble down the road with real estate financing or selling a property if they haven't had the sampling. And our institutional control piece is really only going to be focused on the soil cleanups. It's not, it's not, doesn't, our ordinance doesn't have anything to do with indoor dust cleanups at all. But lenders seem to be really narrowing in and wanting to make sure that they, they know whether a home has, has been sampled or needs a cleanup.
Thank you. And I believe that number of the folks who didn't, who read, who agreed to the testing but refused the, the soil cleanup was in the seventies or eighties about six months ago. Do you have that number now? Has that come down significantly? Do you have that number now? Has that come down significantly? Or what help needs to? Is there any help that we can lend from the city council? To get getting those folks yards cleaned up?
Yeah, I think so. I think we had just under fifty and we might. Beth, you might have to to jog memory here. It might be just under eighty now. But I think this is where all of those different outreach methods that we're looking at are are, you know, what we're we're looking at. I'm getting a message from my computer that my software center is about to reboot me. So hopefully I won't get get dropped off here. But one of the things I just wanted to say is. You know, we've looked at different ways that perhaps you or the mayor might be able to help us in the district. With letters to folks that come from you perhaps that might. Allow folks to, you know, to to get this work done if if that's something that would help them kind of get off center and give us consent to do this work.
I remember asking me for a letter of support to some of those homeowners, and I don't think that a letter being sent to them is enough. I think that going and knocking on some of those doors and having a conversation. With those homeowners in their in their area, I'd be willing to help with that. But I'm not the expert on soil lead contamination and the cleanup area of that. But. So you all would have to help with some. Logging some hours in if we're going around to some of those. And that offer still stands. I I won't write a letter of support because I don't think that will do much. But I would be willing to go out with the EPA or the PDHP CDHP. To go out and knock on those doors and have conversations with those. Either the fifty or the below eighty number that's there still in super fund.
So yeah, I think that's that's ideal. I think we have identified that that boots on the ground is is the most effective.
One point, so Vicente, I was able to pull up the sample. Sorry, the refusals. So for dust, we have about one hundred and fifty, and then for soil sampling, we have. Approximately sixty. And I did want to highlight, we are still doing our door to door outreach where we go and we knock on doors and we ask people to give us consent. We have started to fade off with some of these properties that have refused like three to five times, or we've had direct conversations with them and they're really not changing their mind. So. That's something I'd love to talk with you more, maybe offline, how we can plan something like that, because I do think that having. A familiar face from the city council could be more effective than having some EPA and CDPHE and PDPE folks, but. That's just something to keep an awareness of. Thank you.
I agree. Let's set that up. Thank you.
Mayor, did you have something?
I think it's important for everybody to understand what these institutional controls are. It's going to be an ordinance that will be presented to city council and it'll be passed. It'll basically say that if you want to get a building permit. In this zoned area. You've got to go through an extra step. If your property's been tested and rehabilitated, that's probably going to be the end of it for you, be able to get a building permit for whatever you want to do. If your property hasn't been tested, or if it's been tested and hasn't been remediated. Then the burden is going to be on the homeowner to get the property tested, or the burden is going to be on the homeowner to get this property remediated. That's why it's so important for us as a community to communicate to these property owners that. You're going to cause yourself a lot of heartache and a lot of heartburn if you don't get your property tested and you don't get it remediated. Why not get it done now while the EPA is there? And this process will be. Run out of planning and zoning. We're working on getting the databases together for all the properties that will be in this. This zone. Once obviously the boundaries are determined and they haven't been yet, but that's why it's so important. That's why we did the town hall. We called every telephone number in that area and invited them to participate in the town hall so we could talk to them about. This is what's coming down the road, these institutional controls and. Get your property tested, get your property remediated. It costs. The individuals nothing to have that done, and it will save them a lot of problems in the future. That'll be very expensive to get that testing done and to get that remediation done in the future if it's not done now while the EPA is in town.
Counselor Forrest?
Mayor, does that include, are there any? Roadblocks to them selling the property as a result of the ordinance you're going to be presenting to us?
There's not going to be any roadblocks to selling, I don't think. It the title will reflect that it's in this zone, and so. To that extent, there will be some restrictions on the use of the property. If you want to pull a building permit, you have to jump through these hoops. If you haven't had your property tested and you haven't had your property remediated. It's going to be more expensive for a prospective purchaser to pull a building permit, so that will have an effect. On that property, which is why I say get it done now so that. We'll have a record that the property has been tested and it's been remediated. It's tested and there no contamination was found. Or it's been tested and the contamination was remediated. We'll have that database in the planning department. And we'll be able to clear up that confusion for any prospective purchaser. But if the property hasn't been tested. Or it hasn't been remediated, if it's been found to be contaminated. That's going to create a problem for the property owner. So that's why I say it's so important to get it done now.
I had a couple of questions for the EPA individuals. I think I heard you say that you were going to be doing ecological. Studies on. Certain areas, including Runyon Lake. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there are several of those natural areas around Runyon Lake and Fountain Lake. And we've actually, we got Colorado Parks and Wildlife Assistance. In November for some of the upstream sampling, so kind of a reference location. A ways upstream, and then we'll be looking at some of the the ponds itself and the Arkansas River as it flows by. For fish tissue and bugs, mammal, small mammals. That are in in the area. And and plant species that those animals utilize.
You know, it's still a very popular fishing spot for people, and. I'm assuming that you will also sample the condition, I guess, of the fish in that area. I I don't, I'm I'm not a fisherman, but I'm assuming that people that catch fish may eat some of these fish. And. It would be interesting to find out, you know, whether or not the fish are contaminated. So it it will be exhaustive and extensive, your testing, right, that will be able to dictate that?
Yes.
Right. Okay, that answers that question. My other question is a much broader question, and that has to do. With all of the federal legislation that's occurring. Has anybody in EPA? Analyzed how a community like Pueblo could utilize. Some of these programs and money that will be coming to cities. As a result of all of these, the infrastructure bill and all of the other bills that have passed. I I know that you're limited to cleanup. But has anyone looked at the potential of? Of opportunities for the city of Pueblo that we could access? As a result of your cleanup site, as a result of these these new federal laws?
Sure, you know, the the. Various funds that that we know about, we try to and as grant opportunities come around and. Different funding types come around, we try to share that. With the local stakeholders, and very often it's the local health department that we're working with. And the folks from that department or the community advisory group folks that are involved in the reuse. Programs. And and the different planning that they're doing. So we always. Try to keep our eyes open. The other piece too, that's really important with this administration and different funding is. Communities that have environmental justice concerns and what funding opportunities are there potentially out there for those groups? So the lead collaboration. Our former, one of our former community involvement coordinators, Jen Harrison. Helps work with that, and she helps to convene all the different. Federal and state programs and different agencies to help identify possible resource types. That can help communities. And there's there's one in particular that PDPE plans to apply for called government to government. That's an EJ specific one. Janine or Beth, do you have anything else that you can highlight?
I think that's the main highlight you covered it Sabrina. We have our email list where we distribute information on EPA specific. Funding opportunities, but I think when it comes to the infrastructure and bill funding, we don't have. We haven't really done a specific analysis on what may be available, but I know that Pueblo is a community where we're looking for what opportunities we can share, and we use that. CAGLIS to distribute distribute that information.
Thank you.
Counselor Mike Street.
Yes. How are we assuring? That the title is being, where where are we? Where is it logged that the that the property has been tested and remediated? Because in future sales of the property, when the purchaser is. They'll know that that was in, I mean, superfund area, but where is it logged that they can go? And research that before they complete a purchase?
It'll be lodged in planning and zoning. Typically, when someone comes in, they get a certificate of zoning when they purchase a property, and that's where it'll be lodged there. That's where that database will be, and that's where it will. That's where that certificate comes from. That's where the determination will be made.
Will there be something where title can pick that up in the title work also? Will title be able to? Bring that to the attention of the buyer through the title work? No, like if it's a cash deal or something.
Well.
You know, the title picks up liens and so forth on the property. What do we? Are we placing anything? We have, you know.
Not recording any documents in the public records. No. That was discussed. About if your property has been tested, then let's record a letter or something like that, but we've moved to a different system at this point.
So. It's got to be full disclosure by the by the seller, I would, I would say. Right? It would have to be full disclosure by the seller. Okay. Yeah, because I I mean, somebody buying a property and there's an added expense to that, that's really, you know, not fair to the buyer. And it would be nice if there was some, if we did have a matter of record somewhere. That title could refer back to, or it can be on the assessors records or or something when when a person is making a purchase. They shouldn't have to go through an investigative process for that.
Well, there's all kinds of different buyers, you know, all kinds of different buyers. Some are happy to buy a pig in a poke. Depending on what the price is, and they'll take it. And they'll deal with whatever problems there are that might arise later. Others will want to be much more diligent, and before they close, they'll want to get that certificate of zoning. And make sure what the requirements are with respect to that. But if they're, if they do their diligence and the buyer in that process, that certificate of zoning will reflect. What the status of this property is vis a vis this institutional control ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I agree. It seems like it should be recorded in the assessor's office. Otherwise, if you look way down the line, it's just a potential of blight and people for closing. But also I had a question for the EPA. If if somebody has their outside. Dirt analyzed and that was negative or under a certain margin. Why is it necessary to do inside? I've had a question like that from constituent.
Sure, sure. So. A lot of times there can still be track in or blow in from those sources. But admittedly, sometimes when we see higher lead levels, it can be from deteriorated older lead based paint layers. And we really haven't tried to differentiate and tease out. If we see something elevated, we've just been trying to clean up and do mass dust removal as part of those cleanups. And it's it's unique to Colorado smelter across the nation. There aren't very many superfund sites. Where indoor cleanups have taken place. But we did note that we were seeing really high levels of lead early in our studies. And because that can be a really acute source of contamination, especially to. Women of childbearing age or young ones under seven, we wanted to use as much of our our superfund regulatory authority. To clean up as much of the community as we could.
Okay, thanks, but you're saying that the the federal government or the EPA won't pay to clean up the inside or the if it does.
We have, we have been, yes.
We'll do interior cleanup?
Yep, we've been doing interior.
Have you done that on?
We have done it on. See, we've got six hundred and thirty five sort of estimated. We've gotten close to about.
We've done it on four hundred and four properties.
Moving all the lead paint and.
It's not lead abatement, it's just mass dust removal. So we don't have the authority to.
Massive dust removal. I said I could use that at my house, some massive dust.
Yeah, so we we've worked closely with the local health department and they. Did have a housing, housing and urban development lead abatement grant for a time. But it wasn't entirely successful because the today's costs to do things like. Paint removal, window replacements, doors were much more costly than what.
Yeah, that's no, it's just really expensive to bait lead paint.
It's very expensive. So a big, a big part of what we're trying to do is continue the education and outreach. Around other sources of lead and home maintenance, changing furnace filters out to minimize lead in the home.
Sure, sure. Hey, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Sabrina, I wanted to talk with you about OU two for just a second. It looks like the timeline that was presented there. We're talking twenty six or twenty seven before any redevelopment would be possible there. And we've got a situation in Pueblo now where. Black Hills Energy is looking for a place for a substation in Besmer. And it seems to me that OU two might be a. Great place for that. I mean, I can't imagine a better use for a contaminated piece of property than to put a substation. And I'm wondering. Has that been brought to your attention? Is there any way we could light a fire under this to see if how that could be explored?
Sure, I think I think it's always great to explore those things, and. I think that some of these processes can be done in parallel. A lot of times, you know, if we're able to still do our studies, but then. Things, because this could be a possible reuse. I think that it's definitely worth conversation and pursuing.
And are you the person we should have that conversation with?
Me and Amanda.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year all.
You as well. Next, we have ARPA presentation from the San Diego Arts Center School of Dance, Mr. Andy Sanchez and Nan Wainwright.
Hello, Madam President. City council members, thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're here to present tonight our ARPA grant request and answer any questions that you may have. And just to start off, I think. A lot of what we've presented in terms of the ARPA request pivots on the fact that. Children in the arts. Especially in a community like ours that may be underserved tend to do better with the arts. In all aspects of their life, I'm an example of that, and I think that there's probably some other members in the room who are. Examples of that as well. I'd also say too that I I have two young sons. And one of the sons that I have through dance has really found a whole other aspect. In terms of what he's able to do, even relating to his academic success. So what we'll do is we'll present a little bit of background. And also some detail in regard to the request, and I'm happy to have with me tonight. I serve as interim CEO at the Arts Center, and I should have said my name. I apologize, Andy Sanchez. And with me tonight is Nan Wainwright, who's the director of the School of Dance at the Arts Center, and I'll go ahead and hand off to Nan. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thanks for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I wanted to just walk you through the phases of the program. And then we'll take questions, I guess, organically. Do you all have a copy of the sub recipient agreement? No. Oh, okay, okay. Well, let me just explain then kind of organically where we're going with this. This would be a program where we would start by reaching out to children in in schools. In underserved areas of the community and also in community organizations.
This would be a program where we would start by reaching out to children in, in schools and underserved areas of the community and also in community organizations. Part of this was inspired by the fact that we had a very successful, um, um, interaction with the kid, the children from Boys and Girls Club last summer when they came for, for tours. Um, and a lot of enthusiasm from the kids to be in the School of Dance, um, at the Arts Center. Um, able to use our facilities and just kind of get their eyes opened as to what was there and available to them. And what was a little heartbreaking is some of the comments from the children saying, you know, I would love to come and take dance lessons, but I don't think my mom knows where this place is and things like that. So we're just trying to find a way to, to help these children avail themselves of, of what is available to them in the community and with your help. The first phase would be to send dancers out to schools and community centers. They would do a presentation that would be a short performance as well as some improvisational exercises and some warm-up exercises with the children. Um, and then the children would do a little choreographic exercise. We would then have the opportunity to introduce these children to their opportunity in the next phase of the program to come and actually study dance at the School of Dance at the Arts Center. This would culminate probably in the late summer, early fall with tours and a performance at the Arts Center to kick off a program in, in fall of twenty twenty-three, where we would have an intro to ballet class that would be taught for eight weeks. The children would have the opportunity then to perform in the Nutcracker at the end of their session as kind of an, an inspiration. And then we would hope that those children would then continue their matriculation at the School of Dance in the following spring, starting in Ballet One. Um, and this would all be scholarship according to the subrecipient agreement. Um, we would then repeat the same process while those, that the first class of children are in their classes in the spring. They, the, we would start recruiting the second year's class in the spring of twenty twenty-four, go through the same process. And then, then in fall of twenty twenty-four, they would enter as the next intro to ballet class with the same opportunity to be in the Nutcracker. And then we would send them into Ballet One. So, and we, this program would be scheduled to start this spring if funding is approved and, and continue through December of twenty twenty-five. So we would have three classes and then by the end of that third class, we would have worked on scholarship funding so that that third class could then go in. Um, and that hopefully then at that point, it, it's a going concern. Um, and we can be able to just establish this program on a yearly basis.
If I, if I may add to, I think the last time I was here in front of council, it was to not only thank council for everything that you do for the Arts Center, but also it was at our time period last year where we had our coming home celebration. The whole purpose of that celebration was to reaffirm to the city and county of Pueblo where the Arts Center started and what the Arts Center was about when it started. And I'll just say a little bit about that. The context of the Arts Center is it was begun as a regional arts center. And the idea at that time, and we think back to Kathy Farley and Pat Kelly and other supporters at that time, was for the Arts Center to be able to do the very things that we're talking about. At times in our history, many have stated that at times that we've maybe strayed away from the concept of making sure that we're available to all. So what we're looking to do is get back to our roots. A part of that, as Nan mentioned, is the fact that our outreach, even with Boys and Girls Club and other groups in Pueblo, we take it very seriously. The, uh, the mantle that the Arts Center holds and what we need to be doing. So with your support tonight, that does help us a bit more in that direction. And, and again, I just want you all to know that we take it very seriously and we take our mission seriously. Thank you.
There.
I don't know whether stated or not, the amount requested and the amount we're recommending is fifty thousand dollars for this three-year period. So we think that's a really good program for that amount of money and for that investment, we'll plan to use ARPA funds for that.
Did you say there was already a subrecipient agreement written up or is that typical?
There is, we, we have it drafted and if, you know, we wanted to do this presentation before we send the subrecipient agreement to council. Yeah, I mean, we've, we're recommending that the Arts Center be funded. So we prepared the agreement and it's drafted, prepared for the Jan, I think the twenty-third, no, not for the twenty-third, but for later, depending on what council's reaction is.
And how many students will this be helping? You foresee?
So we would foresee that the first class would be around thirty students. That, that's not including the kids that would be the recipients of the in-school performances. Those, if we did four of them, for example, in the spring, that would be about a hundred and twenty kids probably. Um, and then out of those, the, I'm estimating that the students that would be able to travel to the Arts Center for the programs would be about thirty for that fall program per year. Um, and then we would then make room for those kids in, in the regular classes.
Any questions from council, council first?
Just to clarify, you're asking for fifty thousand for three years. So is that sixteen, six per year took in order to encompass the three years? I just want to be correct on that.
So in, in our original proposal, I laid out the budget in terms of phases. The, the early phase isn't nearly as expensive as, as the others. And, and so, you know, sending the dancers out to the schools as a minimal cost compared to bringing the students in for class at the Arts Center. And by and large, our largest, our largest ticket item on here would be transportation, of course.
So the fifty thousand does, whether it's divided that way or not, is going to take care of the three years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counsel, Tenzio?
Hi. This basically, I'll talk for Andy. Uh, he and I had a conversation one evening that, um, one of the.
It's a festival Fridays.
Fridays. And I've been a supporter of the Arts Center and the arts basically all my life. And I'm, I, I am where I am today because of the arts, basically. So, uh, but being a supporter, I'm also one of the biggest critics of the Arts Center. And we talked, and I said, one of the reasons that I am a critic of the Arts Center is that moderate to low income kids don't get a chance to go there. Also, my argument is that if we want a good, strong, viable dance school, it has to have numbers and the numbers aren't in the upper classes. The numbers are in, in the middle to lower classes. That's where most of the kids are. And there's a, there's a boatload of talent out there. And, uh, so Andy and I have talked and he came up with the, with the program and I think it's a great program. Uh, full disclosure though, do you mind saying who might just teach that class?
Well, the right person for the job is Councilman Tenzio.
Yeah, I volunteered to, to teach that class. Uh, so, uh, first of all, you got to put that dance studio together, correct?
Um, we would, um, we can do it with the existing facilities right now. We would just schedule it in to our fall schedule.
Yeah, so I, I volunteered to, uh, to, to teach that class and I'm, I'm going to be happy to do so. I've been out of dance for a long time, but I think I could teach a beginning class without a whole lot of trouble.
Well, and, uh, many of you may know, Councilman Tenzio actually had his own ballet school.
I did.
At one time, so he's very well qualified to.
I, I, since I am connected to the program, uh, Mr. Kogosik, I assume that I will not be able to vote on this.
I, I would suggest that, that you recuse.
Yes.
We, we wanted to get councils go ahead before we put this on the agenda. So, um, the agreement, I think, has been approved by the Arts Center and by me. It's ready to go and will be on the agenda February thirteenth. Uh, second reading two weeks later. And that fits your timetable, I think, as far as funding is concerned.
Yes, it would, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm really excited because not only will I be able to teach the class, but we agreed that I might be able to choreograph the kids in that class to fit within the, uh, within the Nutcracker, so it's going to be great.
And I, I should note for the record that the mayor also appeared in the Nutcracker and did quite well.
Counselor Warner.
Now, what, what is that, um, what is that role in the Nutcracker, mother, what?
In fact, uh, council, uh, councilwoman, uh, uh, Winter, you were also.
I was, yeah. I felt like a drag queen, actually, by the time they got done with me.
Because Mother Ginger.
How did you feel? You feel the same way?
The mayor had a, the mayor had a different role, for sure.
Oh, I guess so. So Larry, this is, uh, this is classical ballet. Can you give us a demo of releve, plie, releve sync? Wonderful, thank you.
Counselor Maestri.
So do all children qualify for the program or is it ju, is it just the, what would be the cost for a child that didn't qualify for a scholarship?
We had discussed charging a nominal fee, thirty-five dollars for the eight-week session, um, just to start. You know, if, if there were somebody who didn't qualify, who wanted to be a part of it, um, uh, just, you know, to do that intro to ballet, uh, class. We also have scholarships available through the School of Dance as well, um, through the Arts Center. Um, so anybody who was just signing up outside of this program, um, would have the opportunity to apply for a scholarship as well.
Are they part of the same classes and so forth?
They, they would be integrated into the classes. So they would start out with this intro class, um, just to kind of get, um, their feet wet, so to speak, right? And, and feel like they, um, they were established and knew a little bit about dance before they went into, um, the, the already established classes. And then starting in, uh, the springtime, they would just be filtered into the classes. They would probably most likely stay with their classmates, uh, just for transportation purposes. Um, because that would be the most convenient thing is to make sure that we were able to schedule those classes in a way that they could. And hopefully those recipients would then fill up the classes. We have limited space, you know, um, uh, you don't want to put, you know, thirty kids all necessarily in the same room at the same time, depending on which studio you're in, so.
So through the School of Dance, what is the cost for children to attend the School of Dance already in place? Because this is a program that you're in the, you created this, you're creating this program under the, this, um, grant.
Yes, and I mean, it's an, an expansion of our programming, I guess, in a sense, rather than, you know, completely, uh, new programming. They would be doing the same kinds of things, but I get to get back to your question about the cost for the students at the School of Dance. Um, we have a sliding scale. Um, our, our classes start, um, at ten dollars per hour. And then the students, um, the more hours they take, um, the less expensive each hourly rate becomes. Just because if you have a student, um, taking twenty hours of classes, and this does happen frequently, it would become incredibly expensive for them, you know, to have to do that. So, um, we do have individual, um, uh, caps and, and family rates also for, for families who are heavily involved in the school. And then on top of that, membership discounts and scholarships.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fars, did you have something?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Tenzio?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that the demographic that we're going after these kids, like Nan said, their parents don't even know where the Arts Center is, much less wanting to go there. So this intro class for this group of kids is really going to be important because what we want to do is introduce them to what it could be. They'll be able to, when they get into the, the, um, the regular school, they'll be able to, to participate. I, I'll get them ready to, to go into and they'll be full-fledged students at that time. So, uh, we're dealing with, uh, unfortunately, they don't get the same opportunities that upper classes have. Upper class people get to take their kids to, to dance recitals and they get to take them to Nutcrackers, they take them to performances. Uh, people on the lower end of the economic ladder don't get to do that. So by introducing them in a little bit different way, uh, we, we elevate them to the norm, so to speak. Does that make sense? Yeah, so that's basically what I'm thinking anyway, but we're, we're kind of thinking the same.
Yeah, yeah, Larry, you've been asking for this forever, sixteen years. So I'm glad it's finally, finally, because you know, you and I complain all the time that cash is not actually getting to the people that need it. And, um.
It's true.
You've been very, very patient.
Yeah, that's true. You know, like I said, I've not only been the big, one of the biggest supporters of the Arts Center, but I've been one of the biggest critics and this is happening.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you guys for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, moving on to Parks and Rec program revenues, Mike Sixton and Tamara Moore.
Madam President, as they come forward, um, I think Counselor Flores asked last week, uh, for some information on the Parks and Recreation, um, programs, the, the fees for student participation, adult participation, and the related expenses. And kudos to Parks and Rec, they got it together between last Monday and this evening, uh, to present. So the slide deck's ready and also Alex is back up with any of the finance questions. Great team. And Stephen Meyer wasn't able to attend tonight, he has had a scheduled vacation.
He's on the beach somewhere, so we don't feel sorry for him, do we? Again, this is Tamara Moore, she's a recreation supervisor. I'm Michael Sexton, I'm the Assistant Director. We're here to kind of go over our various sports and recreation program fees. Um, you know, we've, we do youth sports, adult sports, we have a lot of drop-in programs. And you'll see kind of a common theme, can we bring that up? You'll see a common theme in our presentation, um, with our youth sports programs that no child is, is ever turned away. We do offer scholarships and, um, go ahead, yeah. Our first, uh, program, we just want to give you a little report on is, is our youth, uh, sports basketball program. We have two levels, we have a recreational level, uh, which consists of two different, uh, non-competitive programs. Our Little Dribblers, which is the kind of the beginning stage, the little tiny ones. If you've never been to a Little Dribblers basketball game or a T-ball game, they're very entertaining. So I, I suggest you go. Um, now our Junior Hoopsters, which is the next level up. And if you look at our competitive level, it's, we don't have as many numbers in, in that program, but that is a competitive, uh, club team tournament, um, program. I think right now our only, uh, level we have is a seventh and eighth grade program. Those are the only ones that have signed up for this program. We had a total of five hundred and sixty-six, uh, participants this last year. Our next, um, program is our recreational, again, recreational level flag football program with our youth. Again, no child has ever turned away and we do have scholarships available. Again, we do start from the little tykes, four-year-olds, and we go all the way up. We added a ten and eleven-year-old division this last year. Again, the program fee is the same as the basketball for the, the entry level, uh, recreation, which is fifty-five dollars. And we had over two hundred participants in our flag football this last fall. We have a tennis instruction program. Uh, we have three levels, we have the Pee-wee, again, the four-year-olds up to six. Uh, that fee is forty-eight dollars. And we do the Future Stars, which is the next level up, which is forty-eight dollars. And then the Aces is the more advanced kids who want to start, uh, working on their games so they can play high school and hopefully go further than that. Our T-ball program is one of our most successful programs, our most popular programs. Again, uh, we don't turn children away on this one either. And again, we start at the very young ages. Uh, that happens to me, my granddaughter right there, she's a, she was our shortstop this last year. Uh, fifty-fives again is our entry level, uh, program fee. Again, four hundred and sixty-eight participants this last year. We had a new program this last year called Coach Pitch. Uh, it took the place of, of a pitching machine program we used to have. And those ages for that was nine to eleven. Again, it was recreational and we did co-ed. Again, a five. Again, a five, fifty-five-dollar program fee. And for a first year, fifty-eight participants, we feel is a very good, uh, showing. Some of you might, might remember years and years ago, we had Slab, uh, basketball program. Well, we're trying to bring it back. It's been slow-going, but we, the numbers are getting better every year. Uh, it's a three-on-three program for youth right now. Again, no child has ever turned away. We do have scholarships available, and this is grades five through ten. Uh, we can offer a little tyke program because the baskets are too high, um, unfortunately. But, uh, we're looking at maybe doing some upgrades to that facility in the future. Maybe we'll have baskets that we can lower to get that age group involved as well. Again, that's a fifty-five-dollar program fee, and we had a hundred and forty-nine participants this last summer. We do have a free program, uh, at, uh, Ray Aguilera Park at the Joe Santos Field, ages seven to fourteen. That program was started, uh, many years ago by Ray. Uh, Ray wanted something to take over, uh, when the old timers baseball association folded. So we, we created this program and made it a free program to bring kids in from all over the city so they have an opportunity to, to play baseball. This next program is a statewide, um, program. It's run through different, uh, Parks and Rec agencies throughout the state. It's a track and field program. It's fifty-dollar program fee. We had ninety-six, uh, participants this year. And we do have volunteer coaches from the county and the city. And we did, the kids traveled on, I don't know how many track meets, four-track meets throughout the Southern Colorado. They went to, I think, Alamosa, Whitefield, Whitefield, Canyon City, and here. So it was a good experience for those kids to learn, uh, track and field. And, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll keep coming back year after year until they start getting to high school, and we're, we're developing some of those other kids. Some of our other youth, our other youth recreation programs, we do have a Sun City Marching Band, which are middle school students. Uh, we did bring it back last year. Um, it was in hiatus from COVID for two years. And the last year that we did try to register, we had three or four kids sign up. We do have assistance through Mark Emery, um, former, um, county band director. He helps us with this program. He's our director for the kids. He goes out and pounds doors for us. And this last year, we waived the fees so we can get the numbers back up, and we had a hundred this year. So, uh, we're looking forward to, to bigger and better things with these kids next year. Uh, new in twenty-three, we have a Learn to Swim program. Uh, the past eight years, the YMCA taught swim lessons at our, our city pools. Well, we have a new, well, we, he's, he's been with us for a year. We have a full-time aquatics coordinator now. And one of the tasks that he's been assigned is let's get our swim program, our Learn to Swim program back in the city pools. So we'll have a new program, Learn to Swim, this summer at our pools. So we're bringing that back. It's a forty-dollar program fee. And we'll be doing registration probably in May. It'll be advertising our program guide coming up in April. So we're, we're really excited about that. A couple of drop-in programs that we do have, you know, everybody's familiar with the rides at City Park. You know, that's been around since the nineteen fifties. Our tickets are still twenty-five cents, and we go Memorial Day through Labor Day. Uh, we, we're probably one of the, uh, largest hiring, um, of high school students for that program. They, it's, uh, it's an awesome program for them. You know, we're gonna try something new this year. We're gonna do five-dollar wristbands. You purchase a wristband for five dollars and you, it's unlimited rides for that evening. We're gonna try and see how that works out. We, we, we estimated that we gave over three hundred thousand rides last, last summer. Open Recreation, we have four outdoor pools. We're, our, our registration, we don't have a register. It's all drop-in. But our, our, uh, admission is three to four dollars, depending on the ages, and it's half-price over at Mitchell Pool. We do have a lot of, um, sponsorships at our pools where we offer free days. So we'll have a, a business come in and, and pay, uh, an estimate of what we would be bringing in revenue for that day. We charge them that, and they, they, uh, open the pool for free for the kids for that day. So we'll have, uh, staying two or three every, every pool, every, every month, it seems like. So it's, it's a pretty good program. Hello? Okay. Hang on, there's our, so all those, all those programs I just talked about, uh, they're on this chart. These are youth sports and our recreation programs. You'll see the fees in the first column. Uh, the number of participants we had, we did do scholarships. And our actual revenue is in the far right, uh, not the far right, far right is expenses. That's kind of misleading because those are just direct expenses with staffing and, and, uh, some costs that we could track. A lot of the indirect costs aren't involved, aren't in this, uh, like our park maintenance for, for maintaining the ballfields for us, the utilities for the lights on the ballfields, the front office counters for registering. Uh, we, it's just so hard to, to track that, those expenses. So right now, all you see up there is our direct expenses. We go to our adult programs. We do have our slow pitch softball program, which is eighteen and older. We do have a co-ed and a men's program. Those fees have pretty much remained the same. They're consistent to what other, uh, leagues around the area do charge. Uh, we fear if we go too much higher, it's gonna, uh, it's, it's, it's not gonna, we're not gonna have a good program. We're gonna only have a handful of teams. Because softball is, is not as popular as it used to be. Kickball is a fairly new program, again, eighteen and older co-ed. Uh, this year we had twenty-four teams, and I think we had maybe half of that last year. So we've done really well with, uh, adults, adults like to play the youth sports. So they like kickball, and we don't do dodgeball yet, so that might be coming, who knows? We do offer cornhole, which is another new program that we offer. Uh, we, we do play those, those, uh, it's a two-man, two-man, two-women teams over, and we play them over at the tennis courts. Um, we have a spring and a fall league, forty dollars per team. And again, we had forty-six teams participate this last year. Tennis and pickleball. Um, again, we have an adult skills drills. And with our new pickleball, uh, facility, we're gonna be offering pickleball lessons this, this year. Some drop-in adult programs, we do at the swimming pools with the adult, the lap swim program and the, uh, aquatic fitness dance. Uh, those are very popular in the summer, summertime. And we do have a Zumba program at the El Centro de Quinones Soul Center. It's a drop-in fee of two dollars. And there's the chart for our adult recreation and sports programs. And the fees on the left, and if you look at the expanded on the right, again, that does not include our, our indirect costs. We do have some concerns if, if we do not charge. Um, we feel that with no commitment from participants, there's, there is a value, you know, on the fees people pay. And we have a hard time. We did offer tennis, free tennis clinics, and we were anticipating full classes. And we were lucky to have each class get, get a handful of people. One day we'd have a handful, and one day we'd have hardly any. It's just, there's no commitment, um, by the registrant. You know, we have expectations of parents and guardians sign up for the programs, but at the last minute, they drop out. So we have to get staffing ready. We have to have the facility scheduled. We use school district on our gyms. So we have to get those scheduled, and, and that's all dependent on our final registration numbers. And if we lose those numbers at the end, uh, we have to give those, those facilities back, and sometimes they're hard to get back, um, for us, for our programs. And with that, you know, I'll, uh, see if, if you have any, we'll answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Councilor Flores.
I, I noticed that, uh, your anticipated revenue, uh, is much lower than it was in twenty-twenty-two. Both, for almost all these programs. Why, why is that so?
Uh, that's, 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 that's a tough one to answer because we're, we're looking at numbers increasing. Uh, you would think the number of rev- the revenue would go up as well. Um, and as I really can't, I can't answer that. That was done during the budget process. I'm just thinking that there might have been a, a reason that somebody might not have thought that we, we were gonna bring in that, those kind of numbers as consistently as we have them. But I'd like to, um, think that, like with our swimming lessons, we'll be bringing in more people than was budgeted. That's, that's our goal.
Uh, you know, my idea last week in bringing the subject up, it really wasn't based on the elimination of fees, because so much is concerned about the national, uh, environment with an increase in childhood suicides, uh, sedentary, uh, lifestyle that has occurred because of COVID over the years. Uh, obesity, all of these different things were, uh, you know, I, I was, I was more concerned about getting more kids involved than I was about the, the minimum fees that you charge. It was also intended just to be for this year, and it really wasn't my idea. The, the, a lot of communities throughout the United States, including Colorado Springs, are waiving their fees, not because of participation, but because of all of these issues with young people. There's, I just found out today, there's, uh, uh, there's an increase in, in fighting now in middle schools and in high schools, uh, that happens almost on a daily basis, including here in, in Pueblo. Uh, and I think a lot of this is, is a pent-up, um, I don't know, uh, issue, uh, that our kids are just, you know, uh, need something. And so that was really my original intent, was that, you know, and I'm, I'm only suggesting this as a jumpstart for this year only. And that would be where we would hold all of the recreation fees harmless, that you would still derive the revenue that you projected, but it would come out of either ARPA, if it qualifies. As, uh, President Graham has in- indicated to me that we have unspent re- revenue, uh, and there's a considerable amount of money there. And so, but if you think that because we provide this for one year and we waive all the fees, that you think that, uh, the kids will no longer be, uh, engaged, uh, that's a different discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say, because like I said, we've had a similar, um, situation when we did offer some free programs and the numbers weren't there. And then when you did have a minimal fee, it's, it's, you don't know why, but you start getting numbers and it's almost maximum. It's, it's hard to say. But I wanted to bring up too, you did approve another full-time position for us for this year, a sports coordinator. So we're in the process right now with HR to publicize that, to get the process going, so we can get that person hired. And we're expecting with that full-time person on board to help bring our, our youth and our adult sports programs up to another level, which could address some of the issues that you're talking about.
Just to be clear, uh, if we were to proceed, waive, uh, the fees this year, you're saying that's not a good thing?
Where, that's our opinion, Dennis. That we, we just don't feel that, because of our past experience, um, not having the buy-in and the commitment to the registration, parents, the kid might be so excited to do it. But sometimes the parents, something comes up and they, they forget, oh, that we don't have the commitment. We didn't pay to bring these kids, so they don't show up. You know, we're, we still have to recruit coaches. We still have to, you know, get the facilities. It, it's, it's something that you, you're not, you don't have a forecast on. Now, Colorado Springs, I, I did a little research on Colorado Springs. They, up to date, they've got over three hundred thousand in donations to pay for scholarships for their, for programs. And not all their programs are completely waived. They only have a cap. They'll give three hundred. In the T-ball program, they'll give the first three hundred and eighty kids that sign up free. After that, they have to pay. But most of it is donations for the scholarships. And we're, we're, we were just talking about that too. We've been talking with finance about set, helping us set up a scholarship program and maybe bringing in donations so that we can do that same thing.
Yeah, I, I was hoping, didn't have to bring in the scholarship, uh, a family, you know. I, I think in a lot of cases, that's a detriment for families. They don't want to ask for a scholarship. So you've got, you've got so many other issues there. And, um, you know, if, if charging twenty-five cents to a ride, I think that is the opposite of what you're saying. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, there's, everybody, all the kids want to go on the rides.
That's a drop-in program. That's not a registering. You're not registering ahead of time and committing to that program. You just show up. So you, but I, I, I see what you're saying.
You're, you're thinking that there'll be a loss of commitment by the parents and the.
We have seen it. We have seen it.
What about a reduction in the fees?
That's, uh, and, and there's a commitment there. They're making, they're making a payment. We've, we've seen that with our scholarships. They do show up. They are there in our scholarships. We'll, we'll charge ten dollars. You know, if we have a fifty-five, sixty-five-dollar fee, and what can you afford, ten dollars? That's fine. We just want to make sure we have that commitment from them.
Tensio.
Uh, I, I totally agree with you. Uh, there has to be a buy-in, uh, going back to the Arts Center proposal. When I talked to them, I told them, I mean, I understand we're going after the low-income kids, but they have to have a, a buy-in to it. So I suggested at least a thirty-five-dollar thing for eight weeks. Otherwise, they won't show up. And, and that's exactly, and, and it's not as if the, the kids and families that are in this program can't afford it. I mean, they could afford the, the, the fees. Uh, and the kids that don't, and the families said, don't you let them in. Whether it's on a sliding scale, or, or whether you waive all fees altogether, if somebody wants to come in, they, you guys don't turn them away. And that's what I like about the program. Um, I'd like to see a lot more participation from that lower end in the city programs. But by the same token, um, they don't think they belong, so they don't go. Uh, that's another story altogether. But no, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the fees just the way they are.
When our neighboring communities look at us and kind of replicate what we're doing, you know, as far as skis, what type of programs are running. So we're, uh, we're doing something right. We've got a, we've got a great program. Our team's.
We really do.
Dedicated.
Yeah.
Councilor Martina Sartiga.
Thank you. Um, thanks for, uh, putting all that information together. That's phenomenal. Um, you know, I, I'm, um, I think that the best way to get some of the folks from the lower-income neighborhoods to participate in some of these programs that were always seem to have some of those barriers, like whether it's money or whether it's even asking for the scholarships. Um, I remember being in similar situations, uh, playing football. That, I think, was registered through, um, Parks and Rec. Um, but I, uh, I think that if we, I mean, fact of the matter is, we really don't know. It sounds like if nobody's gonna show up, if we make it for free, um, but maybe if there's a, uh, an option of donate, uh, donate the registration. So then they still do have a little buy-in, but to reduce all barriers, all monetary barriers, I think is phenomenal. Uh, it's a great idea just for this year. And even if it's part of how we're delivering that message of like, this year is free only. This year only is free. So then they can maybe like value that a little bit more. Um, but I'm in favor of, um, reducing all those programs, uh, fees to nothing. Uh, because teen suicide and, uh, things like that, just getting kids more active is, um, has to be a priority this year.
Anybody else? Councilor Mastry.
Well, you bought, you, you said bottom line, no child is turned away under the current program. So I, you know, and if it works for the Pa- Parks and Rec to function properly so that we can continue to stay whole and, um, progress, then no child is turned, has been turned away. I don't know, term free is gonna make the difference in the teen suis- child suicide rate. Because we are second in the nation, the state of Colorado, unfortunately. But we are also legalized, uh, marijuana, and the concentrates in marijuana are now statistically proving, um, to cause psychosis in children, and we've got that problem. It's proven.
How, uh, how do, how would one go about getting on a scholarship to be able to participate? Because, I mean, although the fees are not a lot, if you have four children, that could, that could get expensive. And so do they come to Parks and Rec? Is there something they fill out? Or how does that look?
Right, usually they come in and, you know, they'll express that they have, you know, to ask us if we have a, um, a rate for families or in the. a rate for families, or, and the ladies up front are trained to, to give them a scholarship application, and say, hey, just fill this out. You know, just, you gotta make them fill something out, I mean, it's just, you gotta have some information down. And then just tell them, you know, whatever you can pay, we'll get your kids sign up, but, you know, the, the kids get signed up no matter what, we'll get them in there.
That's really true. The psychology of it all, and really, the middle-income families, they don't want to go to a free program. You'll, what ends up happening is they end up, those families end up going to the club programs, and they'll go away from city-sponsored programs. And you, you'll lose more people than you gain. You might think you're going to get lower-income kids to go, but you get very few of those kids anyway, and the ones that you do get, they, you know, you don't turn them away.
Our, our experience with the competitive teams, they, they'll come in and, you know, at the low rate that we charge as it is, and they'll just use our league as a practice.
Yeah.
And sometimes they'll, if they got a tournament some weekend on a Saturday, they won't even show up.
Yeah, that's true.
So we, you know, we have to make do.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you gotta, you gotta have that buy-in.
Counselor Flores.
If you look, you know, because I looked at COVID a lot broader than just recreating. It is amazing how much money adults took in this situation, where they're paying no fees. I mean, there's so many people that committed fraud in the United States, but the amount of money that the federal government gave to propping up business is just astronomical. And whether they needed it or not, so. You know, I, I didn't think this was going to be an issue, caught me off guard, because all I was going to really ask for is a thousand dollars, thinking more focused on obesity, sedentary lifestyle, getting kids out in and out of the basement, you know. That was really my original foundation and thought. But if a hundred thousand to help our kids is, is going to be a detriment, it's like, maybe I've lost that vote. You, you think about all the money that businesses took, and, and many of them legitimately, because they were trying to prop up their, their businesses and also pay them. There, that, in no way did that deter them from taking the money going to somehow not show up. And, and, you know, I, I still think waiving the fees for one year, I don't know, it would also be an experiment, I guess, but I, I do get your point, you know, there's, in life, sometimes there's no value things that have no buy-in from people. But that was my original idea, my intent always was good. But I, I want you to contrast what I've asked for and what the feds did to the rest of society.
Counselor Winner.
Yeah, I have quite a few friends that are doctors and quite a few friends that are dentists, and unfortunately, some of them don't take Medicaid, because there's, there's, I mean, they don't show up for the appointments, so again, you just don't have that, that value of time that you're scheduling, you know what I mean? So there does have to be, I mean, it's a problem in the health industry, where you have so many people canceling with free healthcare, that a doctor won't accept it anymore. Because it's blocking off that time. So I, I mean, I get it, I get it, it's, it's, it's a problem.
Or one way to look at that is if somebody is on Medicaid, or it has to use a free program, then maybe they have more life obstacles that come in the way, that may prohibit some of the, the fun stuff, or, oh, eye exam, I don't need to go to that right now, things like that. And so I think we have to start looking at those folks who are living in those debt impoverished brackets a little bit differently, rather than saying they're not valuing your time a little bit more. It's how are we meeting them to get them to participate in some of the stuff that we want them to, to not be obese, to not have to succumb to depression and taking their lives or what have you.
I, I agree with both Dennis and Mr. Ortega, but that's another program altogether, how do we reach that, that part of the society? Because the kids that are going to recreation programs of our little athletes anyway, you know, they're participating because they want to participate, the kids that are sedentary, the kids that are at home, not doing anything that aren't athletic and don't participate. If you want to reach those kids, that's another issue altogether, that's another thing.
I, I just wanted to thank you, I mean, it was amazing how fast you put this together. But I, I think there is a, a good, a good story here from your data. We're providing, we're providing close to 2,000 kids in our community with great recreational facilities and programs, and it's, it's running us less than $100,000, that's amazing. I would say that probably no other city in the state of Colorado that's doing what we're doing with that kind of money, it's, it's not a whole lot. And in fact, that is significant, a significant benefit our citizens get. Participation for that account of that kind of money. So there is a good story here in, in your report, and I really appreciate it, it's valuable information, so thank you, Mike.
You know, it'd be nice to see an investment in some rec centers. Just having an open door for a child to cross the threshold and come into, my mom, you know, my mother, that was her forte and her career. She had an open clubhouse where the kids could come into with no expectations, just to feel at home, just to tell their story, just to have peers around them. And that would be a nice to be able to open up a facility like that, where you have an open door policy, and yet you have expectations, you know, there are rules and there are things. And so I've seen that work real well in the community that I was raised with, raised in. And so we just, we've got, gotten away from that. And I think it would be nice to, to really, for Pueblo to invest in reopening some of their rec centers.
Absolutely, El Centro is open, and it is free and welcomes all ages, so.
Yeah.
You know, and there are rules, there's, there are expectations, but it is free.
And we've put a good investment in that with ARPA funds, I think we have what, a million, I don't know if they've started the.
Yeah, for a basement, yeah, remodel.
And so if we had something maybe on another side of town, not just on the east side, but maybe open the doors somewhere else. That is, I've seen that work really well in communities, and especially, you know, we're a community where there's just extreme addiction, drug addiction, and for children, it's a good place to go to, to kind of escape that. And, you know, fellowship among other children that are experiencing the same thing.
Yeah, speaking of overweight and obese children, have you ever thought of having just a program for, for that category, so they can support each other? Maybe one girls' class and one boys' class, with a nutritionist and exercise? Have you thought about doing anything like that? Do any cities do that?
I'm sure they do, a lot of them have their own, you know, the rec centers, but we have El Centro, it's something that we can probably look at doing as far as a program over there, because.
That way, there's no intimidation, and they can kind of, I don't know.
Right.
Seems to work with adults. I have questions about pickleball. So are you going to have pickleball paddles and balls available at City Park for them to pick up? Maybe they have to leave their license or something?
Take this one.
We have paddles available to check out.
And that'll be over at City Park, I'm, I'm sorry, not.
We have a main office if, yeah.
Well, what about just having it available there at Middle Palace Park, we can walk over and get it, and like I said, they could leave their license. I mean, I know that's not that expensive, the paddle, you know, the amateur stuff is pretty cheap. But if you could set that up, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, maybe through the pool facility, because we don't really have a staff facility.
And if you have an ID, they're going to bring it back. Do you have any plans for any kind of tournaments, pickleball tournaments, or does association in town have it? Because this is huge.
Yeah, right now we're working on planning our summer programs, so that's in the works.
Okay, good, glad to hear it.
Would it be possible to maybe set aside some of, you know, a small amount of money for scholarships for underprivileged kids through ARPA funds? And put the word out, maybe in a flyer form or in some kind of campaign to run through, you know, Boys and Girls Club? And, you know, kids could take it home to their parents and say, you know, I could participate in this for free, and it could possibly drive the, the attendance of different families. And Parks and Rec wouldn't be out money, because we would give you guys some, some ARPA funds and, and kind of see just if there is a need for that to, to get that out more in the underprivileged parts of Pueblo.
That need is being covered by La Hente Police Athletic League. I think there's another group in town, soccer group that's doing that. You want, if you want to drain those programs and put the kids into this one, I suppose you could do that, but you know, the, 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 the kids that go, the kids and families that go to those programs are different than the kids and families that go to this program. You want to do more for low-income kids. You have CSAC to help out La Hente once in a while.
But I mean, you just said that we don't do anything for low-income kids, so if we could possibly put it out there.
Well, we don't, you know, CSAC didn't give a cent this year.
This could be a way for us to.
And we don't do anything, you know, we.
We do get La Hente teams and participants in our programs.
Oh, they, Parks and Rec supports La Hente 110%, I gotta get, yeah, I gotta give you a lot of.
And Boys and Girls Club too, we, we just signed up a whole two, two teams for Boys and Girls Club in our, in our competitive league.
Yeah, I, I gotta give you kudos for that, because you, there isn't anything that La Hente asks for that Parks and Rec doesn't help out with, you guys are really good with that. So in terms of Parks and Rec helping out lower-income kids, they're doing a heck of a job there, especially, and everybody else.
So with this scholarship program you have in place, you have the funds to not turn children away, correct?
Well, right now, we just, we discount it. We don't have any funds that we put back into the kitty, I don't think Alex wants to hear that. But that's the way to set up now, we'd like to change it, so we do have donations or corporate sponsors that we can put that, you know, put their money into a scholarship, so they can be recognized that way. And that's something that we're working on now, I mean, Colorado Springs has Comcast as one of their sponsors. Then there's a couple others, businesses, but also a bunch of foundations, so they got a lot of support for their scholarship program.
Yeah, because then that way it's sustainable past just the ARPA money.
And we currently don't market it as broad as we probably could. To your point, that it's, the word's not out, it's more word of mouth, than if they come in not being able to afford the program.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, thank you for your presentation. And our last item tonight is our ARPA status update. Mayor Gradashar and Chief Solano.
Laura Solano and Alex will take this.
Thank you, Madam President, Counsel, and Mayor Gradashar, we, you have the slide deck in front of you and the other two handouts. But we will be speaking from the, the slide deck, at least this evening, unless you have questions about any specific item. How, how we'll run through this is, we'll start with some general information, move over to the financial information from both 22 and 23 in cumulative spend and remaining balances, and then circle back to, for an update on the small business census track grant program. I can have an update for that, co-create update, President Graham asked for that information, and I can refer you there. And then we'll conclude with an update on the ARPA Million Dollar Trash Program, and we'll switch presenters there for, at that time, with a, with a separate, I think, PowerPoint presentation, and then any other questions that you have. So just to start out, will you drive one of you over there? The slide deck, I think, is being loaded. Loading.
Is that what you were trying to figure the jeopardy?
I couldn't remember. Okay. Well, you've got it in front of you, so we'll go, go ahead and move forward. Just some background, our ARPA award was $36,407,001, as it turned out. The tranche one was received, half of it, on May the 11th of 2021. And the second, of course, was received in 2022, a little, a little later than the one year out, on June the 7th of 2022. And just a reminder that the, the Treasury regulations require that we obligate funds by December 31st of 2024. So that's all the way through next year, and that funds are expended by December the 31st of 2026. And, and as a reminder on the next slide, of the uses approved by the Treasury regulations to replace a lost public sector revenue, to respond to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impact, to provide premium pay for essential workers, and to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And as a reminder of, oh, you're, this, this PowerPoint slide.
Okay, that's, and then everybody's looking at this.
Oh, everybody went directly to the numbers then.
Okay.
Yeah, which are included in both, they're duplicated.
Right, I just, you know.
Thanks, thanks for, for letting me know that they weren't on, that they weren't on, on board there. I am on page number four now.
Okay, thanks.
We're still pulling this up, and just as a reminder and for confirmation, the city is required to submit quarterly reports to the Treasury Department and the Finance Department, and under Catherine's preparation detail, we are on track and timely in all files and all presentation reports. They are first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, the due dates are covered there. And the due date of January 31st is the next one, so no one will be bothering Catherine in the next week as she delves deeply into preparing the, the next quarterly updated report. She, she takes what you approve and what the sub-recipient agreements that are signed for, and what the reports that come in from the individual awardees, and converts them to submit our report in the following categories. She has to submit by these categories only, so public health, negative economic impact, the negative economic impact public sector, premium pay, water, sewer, and broadband, and revenue replacement. So she works the accounting magic to, magic to convert to the report that is accepted. It is a, she can talk about the report, but it's actually a fill-in-the-blank, and it won't, it won't turn green, it stays red until they are satisfied that she has submitted the accurate information in the right box. And now they, of course, they've had the full year of, of timely reporting. So we still have, still are on track and report regularly. The next slide on page number five is a cumulative listing of all 88 projects that council has approved to 56 different organizations since June of 2021, and they are listed there alphabetically. So this is the type of information that will be media inquiries, how many organizations receive the funds, and who were they? Page number five is a quick glance at the 88 projects to the 56 organizations. And the next slide, before I turn it over to Alex, and she talks about money, the ARPA projects by our internal pillar review are listed there by individuals and household assistance, 21 projects, revenue replacement, 20 projects, youth projects, 15, tourism hospitality, nine, community resilience, seven, our infrastructure projects, five, five awards to the nonprofit sector, four to the small business sector, and two administratively. And the next slide speaks to the total award cumulative since we received our ARPA dollars now. And the next slide speaks to the total award cumulative since we received our ARPA dollars now And the dollars are listed there by the same internal pillar categories. And they are cross-footed and ticked out, and they all tie to the same $25,600,000 figure. And I'll turn it over to Alex and Catherine to talk about dispersments and projects. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I will go over the financial aspect. So I'm going to go through the rest of the slides, and then I'll go ahead and explain the other two documents that you received. So this next slide is really our summary page, and it's looking at the dispersment summary. And I do want to note that these are preliminary figures. So this is as of December 31st, 2022. But we did our internal cutoff on January 6th to do this reporting. So there will be differences when we get to the end of our audit in our ACFA, but we are keeping everything consistent as of a preliminary figure. And that was so that we can show exactly, this is what we had at this point, knowing that we are still going to have some invoices that are coming in, some more dispersments that are going to be going out, but so that we have that consistency until we've gone through the audit on this. So you'll see on the top section here, we have the community projects, and so we have each round listed, the award amount that was under each of those rounds, how much of that has been distributed by the end of the year, what that percentage is, and how much is remaining in each of those rounds. And so all these figures tie to the detail that are in the two PDF spreadsheets that you received, and then also in the slides that are further in this presentation. So then we had the rounds one, two, three, and four, and then we had those items that were since June 1st, 2022. So the subtotal of the community projects was $15,656,110.15. As of December 31st, 2022, when we did our cutoff, we were at 53% distributed. Then the next section is our revenue replacement. So that was $10 million. And of that, we have just over $8,808.1 that we had done towards government services and an unspent amount of 1.8 million. We have used 14% of the $10 million thus far as of December 31st. So the total amount awarded was $25,656,110.15. Of that, 29% has been distributed, and so we have just over $18 million left to be distributed. These next couple of slides, they are going to be the same slides that you saw when this presentation was done in June. They have just been updated. That top will say that we have the amount of the award. That's going to be the same that you saw before. Then the distributed has been updated to the end of the year. Same with the percentage and the amount remaining. I do want to note that at the bottom of each of these slides for the rounds and the detail information, we have put a link to where those ordinances and resolutions can be found. So you can go back and see each of those, and we have the resolution and ordinance that corresponds with each of the project on the left side there. So I'm not going to go through this detail because these aren't anything that's new to you. So the round one, this just shows the amount that was first awarded through round one. Here's the same for round two. So the only update here would be any additional expenditures that have taken place since the presentation in June till December. This is round three. Round four. So all of these were presented in June. The news section is going to be where we're at slide 14. Resolutions or ordinances passed by City Council since June 1st. So these are all those that are within the last six months. And so again, we have each of the project names there, what the ordinance and the resolution number was, the amount that was awarded, and what amount has been expensed through the end of the year. And that continues on to slide 15. That shows the total amount of this last section that's new to your presentation tonight of $7.56 million. The next slide is also one that you would have seen just with updates. So the revenue replacement, there are the changes to some of the amounts awarded because we have had some of those where the fire pumper was a different cost, or the IT software. There's been a few changes on there, and you can see that through the resolution numbers, how some of them have two numbers in there. And so some of these have been updated as we've gone through the process to see what the exact amount was going to be, for instance, on the dump trucks. So those have been updated on the revenue replacement. Same on to the next page showing all the amounts, and then the unspent revenue replacement of 1.8 million. Then the last slide here is a summary, but shown in a little bit different way. And this one also includes the CSafe interest. So these funds are sitting in our CSafe account, which to date has earned interest of $490,857.28, so almost $500,000 that we are able to then put out as ARPA funds in addition to what we received from the federal government. So our community funds in total is going to be almost $27 million at $26,897,858.28. Of that, we have had funded awards of $15.4 million. The showing of administrative costs, which include payroll, clothing for unhoused students, ARPA startup, et cetera, for $196,000. So the total amount remaining for community ARPA funds is $11,241,748.13. The revenue replacement, that figure is carrying forward, so it has that 1.865 million that is still unspent. Now, I will take just a moment to explain the two other documents that you had. So it's the same information. It's just presented in a different format. And so the first one that is not colorful is going to be the revenue replacement. And so this is just showing again all the different projects underneath each of the revenue replacements that were approved. And then on the other one, the ARPA fund status that's color-coordinated, this one shows exactly what makes up each of the different rounds. And so if you went through and you were to look at the different colors, they do correspond again back to the PowerPoint presentation. So it's the exact same information, just a different way of presenting it, and something that's a little bit easier for you to have access to, to just grab and see quickly those figures. So that is the end of our presentation on the financial aspect. If there are any questions, I will certainly take those now.
Any questions? I did have one question. So on this color-coded page, when we're looking at the summer reading challenge, first and second year, why wasn't their first year spent completely down before we gave them their second year? And how will we go about, what's the reason for that?
So I could speak to this one very specifically. So what it was is when we did the second year, we went ahead and drew against that internally, but really it's the same pool of money. And so once they get to the point that they have expended and they've requested reimbursement for the $328,500, then we will draw against the remaining balance from the year one. But really, that doesn't make a difference. It's just when we did the reporting, we just put it towards the second year. But it's that same pool of money. So it's in total the $828,500.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Just above that, on the same page, there's two resolutions that are the same exact resolution of $2 million and $1 million. And in the, in the legend, it says that one, the first $2 million is in round one, and the other is since 6/1/22. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yes. So that first one that was done at the beginning in round one, and then we did the additional $1 million. I believe that was just a month or two ago that we talked about that. So I went ahead and split that so you could see that in round one, we did have the $2 million, and then we did an additional $1 million. And so that's why these, the worksheets and the presentation, they have the same amounts in there, but this is presented a little bit differently. So you could see exactly when each part was done by round. So I intentionally did that so that you would see that we did the $2 million and then the $1 million.
I do remember that, and thanks for explaining that the way you did. Thanks.
But these have two, these were two different resolutions, but they have the same resolution number on them.
Yeah, I think we, there's a typo there.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and we can update that.
I think that's what you were asking, right? Yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, the gateway arches. Is that the gateway arches up on north Pueblo on I-25?
No. These are the neighborhood gateway arches. Money's been set aside for that, for the east side, for Besmer, for Union Avenue.
Yeah, because I passed by there the other day going up north, and I figured these things haven't been built yet. And that was private money, what I understood. And when I saw the $750,000.
I just got an update on that today.
Are we paying this twice?
In summer, that second structure will go up, they tell me.
Let's hope.
Well, they're working with CDOT, and CDOT has a construction program up there, and CDOT's been reluctant to give them access to the right of way or enough right of way to get this project done safely. So hopefully they have those details worked out, and they tell me this spring.
Yeah, it just jumped out at me because I had passed through it, and I said, well, why isn't this thing done? And now I had a chance to ask.
Absolutely.
I'm glad to hear. It's not the same. We're not paying for this thing twice.
And I will show you. So that information is on this schedule. It does show the two northern, two union, and the one. Yeah, so that way you do have the information for which ones are included on that.
Any other questions?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, is that going to be like those arches we saw in San Diego? Downtown, remember?
Those were nice ones, weren't they, huh?
They were up. Yeah, something like that.
They haven't been designed yet. And you know, so we're.
Same kind of concept, though.
We're working on that kind of process. Yeah, sort of a welcome on each end of the neighborhood or on the entrances to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, yeah.
Well, that's great.
Same kind of thing.
Love the idea.
I think that's it. Thank you for color coordinating and giving us everything that we need, so it's easier for us to look it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. I'll send those electronically in case you prefer an electronic copy. It is easier to send questions back or to schedule a deeper dive at the work retreat on any one project. A couple of updates on specific awards. You don't see the amount of the Small Business Census Track Grant Program. As Alex said, this financial information was as of 1/6, and the council approved that on Monday, 1/13. But the update, that's a really cool tone. The update is that the letters were ready to go out, you know, the week before council approved. And so once you approved that the use of those funds last Monday, letters went out immediately on Tuesday, offering an opportunity for small businesses to get back. How about just the volume down? There you go. And we've already wanted to report that the due date in responding for acceptance of the grant is February 3rd. So they're still a couple of weeks out for all small business offers. But Catherine has received, since she mailed those out a week ago, 17 replies to accept the grant. Already working on the specific identification numbers that are needed. And she didn't have a listing tonight of what amounts or who they were. But 17 replies in less than a week is a pretty good rate of reply. The second item that President Graham asked me to look at and to report on is actually Co-create. Co-create is working on our broadband projects, and they had a postponed work session, what I think prompted the question. And if you look on page nine of the PowerPoint slide deck and recall, it is the one, two, third item down on page nine. If you recall, council approved $100,000 for them to do the work that they were engaged to do in their sub-recipient agreement. To date, they have submitted invoices for $53,617, which is 57% of the total, and have a remaining $46,382. And I won't steal any of their thunder because they are coming to report the first Monday is a full work session. The first Monday of February is a full work session. But I can tell you what they've been up to briefly is developing the Pueblo Opportunity Project Alliance and submitting the outlines of inclusion from hospitals and school districts and those institutions of higher learning and K through 12 in recognizing and communicating what they will be involved in with broadband. They were instrumental in bringing the Colorado Broadband Office for two presentations, I think on November the 14th. And I believe all of you received that slide deck. Or I'm thinking they've invited a member from the Colorado Broadband Office to join them on their work session presentation. And then the reason for the postponement is Mr. Acuna had been out of state in Mexico, out of the country for three weeks during the holidays. But while they were gone, working with our grant writer, we submitted a grant, a two-year grant for outreach in the Affordable Connectivity Grant to the federal government that was in the IAJA Infrastructure Bill. It's $352,200 grant. We named it the Pueblo Broadband Awarda Project. It comes with staffing that will be called digital navigators, and they will be out working in communities through task force and presentation town halls to introduce and obtain the discounted internet access. And they can also then talk about, you know, what middle mile or connectivity barriers there are, and then use. I think use is also a potential barrier that they will be talking about utilizing. So to say more than that, I'm going to need the two that worked on specifically on the grant. It was submitted on January the 9th, just two weeks ago. Two days later, we received an update that it had already been assigned to the national reviewers. So it's looking like broadband money can be going through this grant process pretty quickly. So that's the update on Co-create as of tonight. And one more, and that's the last update on the ARPA Trash Program. And that will include an update from Mike on where we are with staffing and scheduling and supplies. And then the second part is a switch over to answer your questions about safety. And we'll hand that off to Andrew and Marissa here from HR for the connectivity with training. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. I'd like to introduce Barbara Althan as our trash removal coordinator. She's in the back of the room. She was our temp volunteer coordinator for Parks and Rec for many years, and we're looking forward to a lot of great things from her. She has interviewed nine applicants so far, and I think she's got five more coming up. We haven't had a lot of applicants, but we're still, they're still coming in one at a time. So she's interviewing, and she's got six hired. Six hired right now. Our first cleanup was today. She informed me the QCT area east of the Fountain Creek behind El Centro between 4th and 8th, right? Right? That's what Stephen told me. What was the actual cleanup?
Barbara, do you want to come down here so we can hear you a little better?
Thank you.
And while she's coming down, we did purchase a small van from the Transit Department. We don't have our pickups yet. So we purchased a small van that will take our crews around to the cleanup areas. And we have that yet? We don't have that yet, do we?
I believe it's a fleet.
It's a fleet getting ready.
So today we went out, it was down on the Fountain River between university and, I forget the other street. But we took out a camp. Actually, there was two. There was one behind the other. We found 10 needles, five carts. We pulled out three, four tires. It took us about, well, it's just two of us right now because everybody's in the hiring process. And it took us about two and a half hours to do it, just two of us. With that, it takes several trips back and forth because we can't. With that, it, it takes several trips back and forth because we can't put the carts in with the trash and we can't put the tires in with carts. So we have to keep going back for everything. So that's what's more time consuming.
And our trash truck is on order. I was, Sam from Fleet told us we might not get it until August. So we'll just make do the best we can until then. We do have a trailer coming on order, so we'll, we'll get that hooked up and more staff and Barbara will be on her way. So with that, that's our report.
Are there any questions from Council? Counselor winner?
So I know in the past there was some talk about purchasing an incinerator that you can put onsite and everything goes in there and just burns.
I'll have to talk to Stephen about that. I don't remember that.
There was actually an entire presentation on it. In, in, not here in Council, but at the city planning and zoning there with the folks that sell that equipment.
We'll look into it.
Okay, because it's, yeah, okay, thanks.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, when you, when, do you have the proper gloves when you have to pick up those needles? Yeah.
We do have the proper gloves. We have the proper, all your gear. But normally, the way I work with them, we don't touch a needle. We never pick it up with a glove. We always, I always use a grabber. I have my sharps container, needle point down, goes into the, into the container.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
We have a written process on how to pick up needles through the Parks and Rec volunteers.
Cleanups with Barbara and anytime we came across a needle, she has a flag and drops it and then makes sure all the volunteers know not to, to stay clear and then she goes back and picks it up herself. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And while we transition staff and ask Andrew to come up, and he does have a slide deck, the update with respect to the third party payer that can pay day labor, that RFP is complete by finance and is sitting and purchasing and ready to, to roll out.
All right, Madam President, members of Council, this presentation is a brief overview of our contaminated sharps program. You're just a little snippet of it there from Barbara on, on her procedures specifically. Obviously, we have similar activities that go on in different departments, so I'm going to talk broadly about what it is that we do and try to answer any questions that you might have regarding the program. So real quick, we're going to talk about the, how we are exposed, what those health risks are to us in, in terms of exposure to sharps, applicable standards, how we mitigate the risk to our employees, injury protocol in case something does happen, and then answer any questions you might have. Again, our exposure to sharps comes primarily through our work activities, doing roadside cleanups or in the cleanup of homeless encampments. Needles that we encounter are the primary form of sharps, but there are blades, there's broken glass or other things out there as well. So three real components, main components to our program. The, the first part of it really is in our, how we start the day. Any day that we're doing cleanup activities, we start that day with a safety brief. We talk about identification of needles, proper handling and disposal, and then any injury reporting procedures that might apply if, if someone is stuck. Again, these are, we're not doing these in public works every day, so these are safety briefs that we give on the day of our activity to make sure that that information is fresh for the employees that are working. We try to avoid handling or touching needles as much as we can. That was the gist of the front end loader and the dumpster up there. We typically, as we're cleaning up encampments, we use our equipment to try to get rid of all of the elements that we're picking up and cleaning up. Frequently needles do make it from those encampments and blankets and bedding and other things into the dumpster there, so we avoid touching them altogether. When they are not avoided or when they're not collected in that manner, we do have to do hand cleanup. Barbara highlighted it perfectly. We use our grabbers, we have gloves, we have PPE, but we also have sharps containers or, or containers that will be marked as sharps and disposed of through access point. In case anybody is injured, there is a really straightforward protocol. So immediately wash hands. We are treating wounds to the extent that they need to be treated, if there's any gashes or cuts or anything like that. Report the incident to a supervisor and then seeking a medical treatment to follow on from that. So the risks primarily in terms of needles and sharps exposures come in the form of bloodborne pathogens primarily. That's the primary risk to us here. So there are three diseases that we really worry about. HIV, hepatitis B and hepatitis C are the primary ones that are of greatest concern. Secondarily tetanus from, from puncture wounds to with metal. And then to some limited extent illicit drug exposure, right? These are needles that had likely had some kind of illicit drug in them. And so making sure that our employees are not exposed to that is also important. Most of the time, the reasons we find are empty, there's very limited evidence of any kind of residue in them. Oftentimes we find them at a time where they've been out and exposed in the sun for weeks. So there's generally speaking, a lower risk of exposure to bloodborne pathogens and the illicit drug potential there as well. So we do have some applicable standards that we rely on for guidance about how we establish our program. Twenty-nine CFR is an OSHA regulation related to industrial safety, commercial safety. There's a section in there about bloodborne pathogen exposures. So we align our protocols with that. We also have within our general regulations in the city, a safety general regulation that we follow. And there's always CDC guidance. A lot of that applies to occupational exposures for healthcare workers, but some of those are certainly transferable to the work that we're doing in the right of way. So say someone is stuck, what happens? That, that seek a medical treatment portion that we just talked about earlier kind of leads into these steps here. Employees that are, I guess, receive a puncture wound would go and receive a health screening. Generally speaking, they're evaluated by the physician who is going to determine the, the slate of appropriate steps, but generally they follow something like this evaluation of their current immunization status with respect to the bloodborne pathogens we just talked about or other factors. If they have any information on the source, if the needle that was, that stuck them is available, they'd like to see that. Treatment of wounds that needs to be done. There is an initial, I guess, screening of baseline blood laboratory labs taken for HIV, Hep B and Hep C. If applicable, the provider may offer a course of post exposure prophylaxis for HIV or other, other bloodborne pathogens as well. And then generally speaking, there's a long period of monitoring, just making sure that nothing develops. And if something does develop, then there's a course of treatment that's developed along the way. But it's generally a six weeks, a three month and a six month follow-up for screening for those three diseases we just talked about. In terms of vaccination, we offer our employees three different vaccines that are relevant again here. Hep A, Hep B and tetanus are the three that there are vaccines for currently. But right now there are no vaccines obviously for HIV and none for Hep C. And so those are a matter of concern that we have to monitor and treat as, as they present themselves if an exposure results in an infection. And I think that's it. This time I will take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Is there any questions on safety protocol for Mr. Hayes? Counselor winner?
So are you going to require these employees to receive HIV test or a hepatitis test prior to camp cleanup?
No, I, I wouldn't say that that's consistent with any practice in industry anywhere, not prior to, if there's an exposure and, and they are, you know, potentially exposed to one of the, one of the pathogens, they get screened at that time. But a course of screening for every employee prior to is, is not something that I don't think is done anywhere.
What about typhus?
Typhus is also a potential, I guess, pathogen that we can discuss as well. The three that have been primarily screened for at this point though were the Hep A, Hep B, Hep C, HIV. I think that was it. I think it was those four.
You can have a hepatitis vaccine mandatory?
So we can't mandate employees get any vaccine, but we would certainly offer those to them. We've had employees that have declined or have been contraindicated and, and medically advised not to take certain vaccines. So, but certainly the risk of tetanus or the risk of infection from any of these other pathogens would certainly warrant strong consideration of getting those vaccines for employees.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Thank you. So I saw like part of the PPE was, I saw it was like a pair of like steel toe boots or something like that, probably something with a shank on the bottom to prevent something from going up into the soul or through the soul. What if folks just run into like that kind of barrier? Just in terms of adequate shoes.
So for our employees, our folks that are page members do receive, and, and I'm sorry, it's not everyone, but those that are in job or have job duties that require special footwear, there's an allowance for them. Those employees receive that and they're, they typically maintain a pair of steel-toed safety boots, particularly in public works because of the work that we do. I require that for all of our streets, traffic, stormwater employees. That's, that's, that comes out of that allowance that they get every year.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor winner?
So do you require that with your volunteers?
So in terms of volunteers, we are not typically going to areas where we expect to encounter, I guess, like the homeless encampments, right? The cleanup yesterday, for instance, was a, was a, a pretty controlled environment, mostly trash and litter. There was a pre-screening to make sure that we weren't going to encounter any needles or put our volunteers into a hazardous condition. We did a safety briefing again, just like I do for my employees, talking to them about the identification of needles, what to do if there was a hazard encountered. Basically leave it alone, put it out to a city employee. So no, we don't provide footwear specifically for them, but typically we advise those folks in advance to come prepared to walk, bring clothes to shoes. But again, we tried to minimize the risk for any volunteers that are out there as well.
I would assume that any community member wanting to volunteer knows the rest they're going to be taking before they even go up to a trash cleanup.
And it's also not that we don't provide any PPE. We do provide the gloves. We brought buckets and bags and, and grabbers as well for the volunteers to use as well, just to make sure that they were safe.
Thank you. Anybody else? The cleanup yesterday was quite successful. We had about thirty, forty volunteers stop and, and clean up and we got Central Plaza and parking garage and.
All those, all those areas look.
The downtown area, there's, hopefully it's still remaining trashless today. So, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Is that the conclusion of ARPA? Okay, if there's no further business, I.
If you had questions for HR, Marissa was here to answer. She comes.
This for the mayor's office. Somebody brought up the issue of paying for parking at the nature center and wondering if we were going to resolve or come to a conclusion with that. They were encouraging us to not to charge for parking at the nature center. And so I was, I wanted to advocate for them to.
I don't think. We said that, I think it was the nature center. I think they indicated to us that they were going to do away with that.
The way I remember it is that they wanted to do away with it, but they wanted our approval. We said, yeah, do it.
So I, are they charging for parking down there now?
That's I guess what you're asking.
I don't know currently, but I was, still wanted to follow up to.
Last indication I had was that they were going to, their board was going to eliminate that parking charge.
Okay, I'll follow up and I'll double check that. Thank you.
Let us know if they didn't.
I can also confirm with them, but I can tell you that the mayor had a guest in the mayor's office today and, and while he was out of, out of town, I visited with the individual who said, um, thank you, I was at the nature center and I didn't have to pay for parking. So that's one individual just today.
Great, thank you so much.
What was your question, Counselor winner?
My question is, have we had an employee stuck with a needle and what happened?
Sure. We did have one employee earlier this fall that was stuck with a needle and that individual immediately went and was seen by a medical provider and went through all the baseline testing and then now is in the regiment of following up every six, three to six months. So there was nothing negative so far that has come from that, thank goodness. I guess I would also, to put that in context, you know, Andrew and I were talking about this earlier today and, you know, these, these types of cleanups are really not new in the sense that, you know, public works has been out, they do right of way cleanup. So these kinds of exposures happen. But I can tell you that in the thirteen years I've been with the city, I think the number of exposures I could probably count on one hand. So I think that, that demonstrates that our PPE and training is effective, certainly can always be improved and we work with our partners at Hub on risk management as well. But, you know, we did have the one that's connected with the recent cleanups. But again, I think putting it in context are, are we've done very well and have operated as safely as possible.
Counselor Flores.
It just reminded me, obviously when you, you do have an incident, whether it's a cut or a broken bone or a needle, we have workers' compensation. We would notify after that happened in case there is a long-term issue for any individual. So they have coverage under our workers' compensation through the city. That's not a question, I was just wanting to clarify that.
Any other questions? All right.
Is there, what is the reason for the median ordinance? Did you just want us to review this? What's going on with this?
We have a work session on panhandling coming up, I believe it's next.
So you just want people to review the, the law that's not being governed? Enforced, sorry.
I think it's part of the upcoming work present, work session presentation by the chief.
Okay.
And so Deputy Chief Martin is here today, but this is just simply for awareness and.
All right, I just wondered what it was about. Thanks.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven.